Adequate notice of this meeting of the mayor and council has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the borough of Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on December 2nd, 2020. And notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building.
Thank you, April. Everyone could join me in saluting the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a moment of silence for our troops, their families, all our first responders and everyone still dealing with this pandemic. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to workshop. We have a few things. The first thing I want to talk about is we have the introduction of our 2021 budget tonight. I just want to say that our team led by Ed Kershawbaum has done an outstanding job of working on the finances and we're coming out with no increased budget this year. So it'll be a zero increase to the tax levy and it was due to all the working hard on straightening out, straightening out all these departments and and working on different revenue sources. So, you know, I really want to commend to all of them that work so hard, including our, even our department heads. Ed Kershawbaum was on them all year long to make sure that they cut over time and did things that and to streamline different things and putting, putting some of the things that they do online. So we could do more with less. But I just want to thank everybody. We're coming out with a zero budget increase. And there's a, we sent the council a summary of the budget. So, and I have some of our finance team here. If any of the council members have any questions on the summary of it, or if they would like us to go over, over each item. Anybody has any questions on the budget? I know during the second reading, we get a lot of different questions, but tonight during the introduction, if anybody has any questions for our finance team. Right. So we'll move on. You have the summary, the summary of our budget is going to go up online tomorrow, correct, April? All right. So then anybody could take a look at it. Next thing I have on, and I know Jerry Dusty has a replacement for us, Patrick Herrio. I want to talk about the Verizon lawsuit. Verizon has filed a lawsuit against Belmore and it's basically for the polls on Ocean Avenue. I think it's a, Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong. If you know, it's, I think it's a federal lawsuit.
It is, it is. It's a federal lawsuit that's filed in the district court of New Jersey. It was filed just recently, this past, I believe within the last two weeks. And I believe people are going to start getting served relatively soon if service hasn't already occurred.
So one of, one of the things, and the reason why I bring it up is because we've, no matter which way this lawsuit goes and probably Verizon has a probably a good chance of, chance of prevailing and instead of giving us polls that, that are aesthetically not pleasing and, and, and give, we lose control of what goes on our beachfront. We're putting a, we have a first reading of an ordinance on tonight that is going to address, you know, the aesthetics, the kind of poll and everything that we can control. So just in case that this, this lawsuit, I mean, we're gonna, we're not going to take it lightly and bow down to them, but in case the judge rules in their favor, which they do have the law on their side because it is a utility. But we want to put this ordinance in place and we have it out for first reading tonight so that we can, we can control the aesthetics and different aspects of what gets put into our town. So I just wanted to bring that up. I know the lawsuit's pretty new. It's two weeks old, but I think we are probably the test case for Verizon in New Jersey. I don't know if any other town has had a lawsuit filed against them for for the, using the right of way. And there is some law on their side. So, but we want to make sure that if it's coming to our town, we want to make sure that we, we have everything in place that we need. Does anybody have any questions on that before I move on?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. I just want to, part of the issue is that unlike the service we have now, 3G, 4G, 5G requires lots of polls that are close. It's a closer distance. So we're not talking about one or two poles. We're talking about basically every other block going down Ocean Avenue. Is that my understanding correct?
They have to be within a thousand feet of each other. So I know we were originally talking to Verizon. We were looking at putting him at, at the head of each intersection. So it wouldn't go in front of anybody's house, would be on the beach side. And some of the issues that we had, that had arisen out of the talks with them is Verizon didn't want to share their polls with anybody else. So if once, once this comes into play and we allow Verizon to come in, you could get T-Mobile, AT&amp;T and have three and four poles next to each other and that, that was unacceptable. So where this ordinance will, will restrict anything more than one pole and they would have to share with other companies to use the same pole if they were coming in because the other companies have the, the exact right and Verizon was unwilling to share with anybody. So one of the big things we're worried about is three and four poles or one pole for each company on Ocean Avenue, all in the same vicinity would have made our ocean full of horrible. So that, those, those, one of the big things that we had, there was a few other things that when we're negotiating with them and then I guess they decided to use us as a test case in federal court. But so we wanted to get this ordinance in place to make sure that we have the control of what goes there and it's only going to be a single pole. And if other carriers have to use that pole, that's the only one that they get. So I don't like it any more than anybody else, but it's the sign of the times that we're in and they pretty much have the law on their side. So I hate to see them come to our town, but it looks like they're coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, can I ask a question about the, the right of way or maybe to Patrick? So okay, so Ocean Avenue is a county road and you know, there's a public right of way. It includes not only traffic, but the ability of utilities, which a phone company or cellular service company is considered one. How to, how much, how many feet on each side of the street is included in that right of way? I'm trying to get an understanding of what exactly the right of way of Ocean Avenue includes.
I would have to look at the map itself to definitively tell you if it's, there's eight feet of right of way versus a six feet right of way. I know substantial amount of negotiation was trying to force these poles to be on the ocean side of the right of way, just to keep them away from any of the residences. One of the big issues with this whole lawsuit and this whole federal act is what's under the statute of 256. And that says the borough cannot take any action which would have the effect of prohibiting the installation of a pole. So that's kind of where like, there's a lot of ambiguity of, well, what are we doing? What are we doing wrong? Or what are we doing right? Where, as Mr. Mayor was saying, the wall is kind of on Verizon's side of the utility where they can come in and if the borough doesn't permit it under the shot clock, under just, just what's called, I think it's CFR 1.60002 is the actual code of federal regulations. They have, we have 90 days in order to permit it or not. So to answer your question in a roundabout way is, I'm not certain which help, why the public right of way is on Ocean Avenue. And I would have to actually look at the federal, the actual drawings of the map to give you a definitive answer.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council president, you have a question?
Yeah, is this the 5G that's supposed to go from Sandy Hook all the way to Cape May? Is this going to be something that's required in every town down the coast?
Well, that's when we were in negotiations with Verizon. That's, that's what they had told us. And they were waiting for somebody to come up with the design. I guess once one of the towns comes up with a design and they're, they're going to use that design all the way up and down the ocean, all the way from Sandy Hook to Cape May, from what they told us. So and it could have been, it could have been like a little tactic on their part to say, you know, whatever town allows us with the aesthetics that they want is going to control what the aesthetics are, aesthetics are. You know, that was told to us in some of the negotiations, but you know, that could have been a tactic that they were using to try to get us to be the first ones. So we weren't buying it and and I guess they're a little frustrated. So they filed a lawsuit. But the ordinance and the reason why I bring it up, the ordinance that we're putting in place tonight will still let us have control of what comes into our town. And the biggest thing is with this ordinance, it has to be, they have to allow all the, all the companies to use one single pole, whether it's on each block or whatever, whatever's decided that there can't be three poles on a block. And so we're, we're still working on it, but we wanted to get this in place since they filed the lawsuit. So we make sure that we have some protection.
I actually have a question now. So does, um, if this ordinance does go into place, does that make the lawsuit a moot point?
Well, actually it'll, I think it gives us some leverage to, because this is what we're negotiating to say, this is what the stall was that, you know, Verizon wanted to come in, they wanted to put their polls in and they didn't, they didn't want, they weren't sharing the poll with anybody else. So and that was the big thing that we said, well, then that would give, well, the other companies are right to put a poll in and we're not having three polls at every intersection. So, or three or four polls at every intersection.
So I, okay. So I get that. So if we pass the ordinance, now you have this company with one poll. Does Verizon have to put their, you know, their equipment on those polls or because they filed the lawsuit first, will they be able to have, not have to do that? And then we'll end up with two polls? I guess that's
What our ordinance says that whoever puts the polls in place has to allow the other, the other, and I think Mr. Dusty had come up with the ordinance and just to whoever's putting the polls and has to allow the other companies to share that poll. And then plus with this ordinance allows us the aesthetic look and, and, and negotiate the design and everything else. There, there is other companies out there that are private that they put the polls up and then Verizon would have to rent space from them. But what it does is it tells the courts that we're not against the polls, but we, we want to have some control of what comes into our town.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just piggyback from Mr. Caravalli. One of the big issues with, it's not so much the co-allocation of polls that is the crux of this lawsuit. It's the shot clock where the borough was provided 90 days to take action. And Verizon is saying that we didn't do anything in accordance with the federal regulation and governing federal provisions. So what they're trying to do is force the court to order the borough to take a specific action to permit Verizon to have access to our right of way. Just basically hand them whatever they want. The ordinance just gives the borough some form of control of what is the aesthetic that's going to be actually placed on the borough properly.
Mayor, I have another question.
Sure, go ahead, Ben.
Does this have anything else? How does the mama do? Idea that they want to put up a pole on their restaurant? Now, is, does that come into play at all?
Mama Luke's is totally different than this 5G. I know that people are saying that it's 5G going on Mama Luke's, but the Mama Luke's issue is cell tower, more cell service than internet service. I don't think it's necessarily their, their 5G, but, but that, that whole thing is a whole different animal because it's on private property. We don't allow it. And they got to go to the zoning board to try to get approval for it, which I don't think anybody's in favor of. And once it gets turned down at the zoning board, it's, it, it's a little different because it's private property. I think Verizon would have to actually find another site because it's something that has to go to zoning to be approved. And if it gets turned down at zoning, I'm not sure if they'll go, what their next step would be. Patrick, do you ever have a, any dealings with Verizon that got turned down on private property in other towns?
I haven't came across anything of that nature yet. I can, I can dig though.
Yeah, maybe we take a look to see if, you know, what kind of grounds, because I, I don't want to speak for the zoning board, but I don't think anybody on that zoning board is too happy about putting, putting antennas on that building. Because I mean, really, once you put it up, they're stuck for as long as the lease is. And people don't realize that. All right. Okay. All right. Thanks. All right. Anybody else on this Verizon issue before I move on? All right. I have Ryan is on with us tonight and he wants to talk a little bit about the fire department. He wants to speak about our rescue truck. Ryan, instead of me explaining it, maybe you, you could do a better job of doing that.
No problem. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to discuss our, the Belmore Fire Department in regards to our rescue truck. In September of 2020, the vehicle was put out of service after a annual preventative maintenance session and DOT inspection. During that inspection, it was found that the cab was cracked away from the chassis with the condition and age of the truck with a slew of mechanical issues. It was deemed by the service technician to put the vehicle out of service. Since that time, we have formed committees that have been forming ideas in different ways, how to replace this or repair what was going on. During that, we, we sought out two vendors to give a professional opinions based on the current state of the apparatus, the cost effectiveness of a repair. After doing the cost analysis on that, both vendors detailed in their report that due to the crack in the cab, it was a liability and their insurance companies would not let them repair it due to the age and the significance of that crack. Since then, we have got the committee together and what the committee has looked at is new versus used apparatus, commercial versus custom apparatus. And we've also considered the future needs of the borough and what we're looking for in an apparatus. The committee has sat together and discussed what the options are and what they are looking to do. For a quick background on the rescue truck, what that rescue truck provides to the borough is it does a lot of routine emergency calls such as carbon monoxide incidents, natural gas incidents, hazardous material response unit. It has a light tower which is used by multiple agencies during emergency events, whether it be on the beach for a water rescue, motor vehicle accident for an investigation, or just general scene lighting for the fire department to provide the lighting. It also has what we call a cascade unit. What that cascade unit does is it allows us to fill air tanks, air cylinders that the firemen are required to have on scene during firefighter operations. So with this cascade system, right now, another analysis we did was to reuse this into the new or proposed apparatus and it was found ineffective due to the age of the aging condition of our current cascade. The, one of the other things that this rescue truck provides to the borough of Belmar is it also provides a generator. So with the last engine that we got, we did not have a generator due to the cost of the generator. This truck would be, have that generator and it has also been used in the past to fuel, use, use for our fuel pumps down at the marina to power the fuel tank. So during this committee's research and findings, they presented to us a commercial cab, commercial chassis. What they found during this whole process was that during COVID and, and other reasons beyond the control is that the availability of these apparatuses is very difficult to get. The commercial cab, commercial chassis, for whatever reason, are a year to a year and a half out with construction. We were able to locate a vehicle, a Kenworth cabin chassis that is available to be delivered by the end of December. They've done their due diligence. I've done my due diligence and other members of the public safety committee who've, who've been working diligently to try to locate an apparatus. We've, we've fallen short on that due to the configuration of the current firehouse, the length of the bay, the width, the incline going up in the garage door height has all been difficult things to overcome. Right now, we're utilizing mutual aid for that cascade system. And prior to the water rescue season, we were using the Ford excursion as a vehicle to transport firefighters to and from emergencies from hook and ladders firehouse. Right now, since the water rescue team is back under our control, they, they were in need of a vehicle. So we had to re-appropriate the, the excursion back to the water rescue team. And right now they're utilizing a DPW pickup truck to get them to and from emergency calls. With our insurance company, it is not recommended due to span of control, liability issues for these, for the firemen to respond in their own personally owned vehicles. That is why we're utilizing that type of vehicle there. Another important factor with this truck is recently with our, with our taking over the first aid, we do not had, we do not have the capabilities for extrication. So we entered into a agreement with the borough of Neptune City to provide extrication services for the borough of Belmar. What this rescue truck does is it has the vehicle stabilization, stabilization equipment to begin the extrication process. Right now, our, our, we have a limited supply of that type of stabilization equipment. With the replacement of this truck, we'll be able to get the equipment to and from the scenes and begin the process to work in conjunction with the Neptune City Fire Department with that type of extrication services. And that is all I have. If anybody has any questions.
If, if it's a 1985, right? 36 years old, that truck?
Yes, yeah. This truck is, uh, is one of the oldest in the fleet. It is a 1985 Ford custom rescue truck that was utilized at this time until pretty much till September routinely. About 40% of the calls, actually.
They let you know about financing options?
So, yeah, so we do have
We just bought the
Yes. So there is financing options that we are going to review. They do offer a, you know, low interest financing option and different, different routes to do that. Payment is not required until delivery of that apparatus or therefore after, within the negotiating terms.
Anybody have any questions for Ryan?
Wait, I do. What, what year is that? Is the new one?
The new one would be a 2021.
Oh, it's brand new.
Yes. Yeah. Unfortunately, due to the, the height requirements of the bay and the, the width and lengths, we're unable to find a used apparatus that would fit into the basin and meet all the requirements.
The bays are low.
Yes.
Is that, is that right?
Yeah. We're looking for something about nine foot.
And okay, is, is this like, is this a special order to get it lower or it just happens that you
No, it just happens that this works out that, uh, the cabin chassis that they were researching is available and it does meet the requirements of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, councilman McCracken, go ahead.
Yeah, Ryan. So this is the second time within a year that we've been faced with, you know, replacing equipment or the fire company on sort of a, an emergency basis, no, no pun intended. Are you working with the fire company to, all the three companies to come up with a plan to replace these vehicles periodically? So we don't end up in this situation. You know, I'm just thinking that, you know, a fire truck, well, I mean, obviously that one lasted 36 years. I don't know if it was bought and reused, but you know, what is the average lifespan in a municipality like ours with the number of calls we have and the number of miles that are put on a vehicle to replace them? Like, how many years estimated are they estimated to last?
So with, with the national recommended practice is between 25 years is the top line for a borough within our, you know, 25 to 30 years. The, the first run engine is said to be put now to service by regulations at 15 years. And then go from there. So I mean, the situation we're faced with here is a unique situation with, you know, the, the age of our fleet that we're trying to maintain.
Yes. So I guess my question is, you know, can we develop a replacement schedule? So that, you know, say every five years, you know, based on the lifespan of this equipment, you know, every five years, we know we have to replace a truck and we have to bond for a truck. So we're not constantly ending up in these situations where we have a piece of apparatus that's out of service. You know, there weren't the funds to maintain it or replace it or whatever. And so that the finance department knows that, and they can plan, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years ahead to know that, you know, on a rotating basis, we're going to be getting into this pattern of replacing vehicles so that we constantly have, so you know, so that Belmar residents can you know, come to expect reliable service from, you know, the equipment that we have and the volunteers that we have and the borough can plan, you know, to replace these, these trucks. So we're not always ending up in a situation, you know, such as this or the situation we did with the, the other pumper. I mean, is that something that you're, you're looking at? Trying to create a, a plan moving forward?
Yeah. So we, we are working on community life safety, you know, improvements such as this. Like I said, with the age of the fleet, we, we have tried to work that in and we do hopefully plan to adopt some sort of plan that goes along those lines within NFA regulations. Unfortunately, the fleet is that old. Ryan, if you would discuss how old all our trucks are. Yeah, no problem. So right now, the newest piece of apparatus which we, we got was the C-grade demo. That's a 2018 followed by the 2008 ladder truck, which was acquired by a federal grant. In 2002, Union's first run engine was purchased, followed by the 19 89 engine at Goodwill, the 1984 rescue. And we actually do have a 1982 engine still in service at Union. So there is a plan. We've sat down, we are putting a plan together for finance. Unfortunately, we have an aging fleet. So we have to put a plan together in the future to make sure that we can get the fire department up to speed.
Yeah, I just think we want to get to the point where, you know, as the greatest extent possible, we can space it out. So we're, we're not ending up in a situation where, you know, in a two or three period, two or three year period, we need to buy more trucks, you know, can get into. And I realize it's hard when you're so far behind like this, but you know, I would think that, you know, the finance department would appreciate that. My next question is, did, didn't the rescue squad or the first aid squad have a rescue truck? And, and what was the disposition of, of that vehicle?
I believe that was the one that they gave away for a dollar to, yeah, we, we've probably could have used that rescue truck, but they decided to give that to a town in New York for a dollar.
Thank you.
Ryan, I just have one other issue. The volunteers of the fire department really put their heart and soul into protecting the town. Without the use of this rescue truck, we're limiting response from the hook and ladder fire company to an on-scene fire, correct? Yes, that is correct. With the, the availability of apparatus and, and equipment. With the, the availability of apparatus and, and equipment, we are not able to get the manpower to and from the scene efficiently.
Well, I know with this truck, I mean, the, the CO2 detector, when CO2 alarms are going off, this, this, this truck always carried all that equipment to check residents to see what the problems were, what the real CO2 numbers were. And so it had a lot of, a lot of different uses and it was, it's the only one in the borough. So it's definitely has to be replaced. We, we can't, with the crack cab and we can't put firemen in there trying to still use it. So something we're gonna have to figure out how to finance it. I know that our finance team is taking a look at the lease, the lease purchase and seeing which way is the best way to go. But I think, Ryan, if I'm correct, this is the only one that we can get by the end of the year.
Yeah, from our research, this, this truck right now, it's reserved to, to us, you know, on a basis right now that, that we are entitled to that truck if we so please. But yes, it was the only one we, I believe they, they met with at least six vendors to go through the whole thing and timelines between one year to two years for completion date.
I know they were checking across the whole country even for a used one to see if, but like you said, there was a couple of good used ones out in the Midwest that we probably could have used, but they wouldn't fit in the garage and with Homeland Security and, and all the regulations on that, they have to be garage kept. So it's one of those things that we're gonna really have to take a serious look at and start to work on to figure out how to get it. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you guys for having me this evening.
Anybody have any other questions for Ryan before we leave?
I had one question. I probably missed it. What's the cost on the, on the vehicle?
The cost of this vehicle is about four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And there, would there be more cost for the equipment we need to put on it?
No, the equipment would be mostly, that, that's all the equipment needed. And equipment from the old truck would be reused, you know, your hand tools and your mounting and your, your fans. All those type of tools would be, be reused from the last apparatus.
That's pretty much the same thing we did with the fire truck that we just replaced. Great. Thank you.
Yes, very similar.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. Now, the last thing I got to bring up in workshop because Mr. Dusty said that we're gonna have to really start to take a look at this. And that is the question of, are we gonna allow to sell cannabis in Belmar? Or are we gonna create an ordinance? Because whatever we do is in place for five years. So I want to hear from the rest of the council, the thoughts about banning the sale of cannabis in, in Belmar. Yes, Council President.
Okay, Mark, you remember going back when we started to campaign, the three of us. Something that was important to me was the sale of cannabis, but we had to wait to see what the governor was going to do. I know we have an ordinance on tonight for second reading, but I'm really not all for that ordinance. I'm, what's more important to me is just to come out and say yes or no, we're gonna sell it, we're not. And I'm definitely against selling it. I have nothing against medical marijuana. People will be able to get it probably next door in Asbury. But as far as selling, selling it here in town, I'm, I'm against it. We still have a family town in spite of all our tourists who come in, the kids who rent the houses. It's still a family town. And I, I'd like to keep it that way and say no. I mean, the other towns are doing it. Why can't, why can't we do it? Why can't we take a stand and just say, just say no, we don't want to do it? And the other question is, did the governor, in his wisdom, put any monies aside for us for the problems that will probably happen this summer? Because it will be legal to smoke. We may not sell it here, but we're going to be looking at some problems with smoking cannabis. And it might be a drain on our police department, our resources. Did the governor put aside any money to help us? That's a question I have, but I'm also very strong against selling it in town. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the ordinances that we have on tonight, just to be clear, is, is it's the smoking of it on any of our parks or playgrounds or on the beach. So it has nothing to do with the selling of it, but that, that's the ordinance is for second up for second reading is just that, and what it does is it gives the police department the tools if somebody happens to be smoking at the playground or beach or the parks, that they have the right to tell them to put it out. Because now that it's legal, if you don't put these things in place, then people will be able to smoke everywhere. So and I think it's a type of thing that is same as alcohol. You know, we don't allow alcohol in public. And to me, it's, it's basically the same thing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, Councilman Wong and I have discussed this topic many, many, many times for lots of hours of discussion. And I guess, I guess it's no secret that I'm a longtime advocate of legalized cannabis. I myself have a medical card. I find that driving an hour plus to the dispensary that I use, one of the things that New Jersey does is once you register with a certain dispensary, you can't switch around. Even if a newer one opens closer to where you live, you have to go through a whole process to switch where you're getting your prescription filled. That being said, I mean, I'm very much in favor. I actually, I think I either moved or seconded one of the ordinances that's on for tonight because I totally agree. We shouldn't have, nobody should have to worry about somebody using cannabis on the beach or in a park or any place in a public space, same as alcohol. I mean, I think that's very consistent in our position. That being said, I think one of the things that there's, I have three main reasons why I would oppose any kind of move to outlaw cannabis. And the first one is because in the election last fall, the residents of Belmar voted more than two to one in favor of the question. It's clear that the majority of our residents want legalized recreational cannabis available to them. Now, whether they want it in town or not, that's a different question. I think we would be well-served if we actually tried to find out from people what you, what they really want to have happen in town. Tom's River just did the same thing. Tom's River was already to pass an ordinance outlawing the sale. And when the public spoke up, they decided to table the motion to do exactly what I'm suggesting. We should find out from people. I think the, the fact that so many people voted in favor of it really gives me pause to do, for us to do anything that would just basically ignore the results of that election. We can't really do that. The second thing I think is that a lot of people don't realize that the way the cannabis industry, recreational and medical is structured now, you basically have three kinds of facilities. You have a grow facility, you have a processing facility, and you have the retail facility, medical or recreational. And those places don't have to be in the same location anymore. The, you know, I can see not wanting recreational sales. If that's what the public wants to see, that's fine, but there, a processing facility would not have public sales. They would simply basically need a big enough space to do the processing and they need parking for maybe twenty employees. No, those are brand new jobs that don't exist yet. So, you know, there's part, that's part of the push to get this business going because it will offer a lot of jobs to a lot of people. There's no place in Belmar that's going to have the square footage for a growth facility. That's not gonna happen here. There's no way anybody's gonna do it. I don't really think there's many spaces that are big enough for a processing facility. And honestly, if you look at where all the cannabis dispensaries are located, they're all either located in industrial parks or in strip malls with huge parking lots. Parking is a very important element of these retail establishments. They have to have a lot of parking and they get some fair turnover because they'll actually have, you know, I've seen dispensaries where people are waiting in line for over an hour and the parking lots are just full. That's why strip malls are so attractive for these kind of businesses. And again, Belmar doesn't have a space that really fits that. So practically speaking, I don't think anybody's gonna want to open a business in Belmar. They might say they do, but when they actually look at the business profile, their business model, they'd have to follow and all the regulations they have to follow to get that permit to be able to do it. They have to show all their financing is in place. They have to show where they, they, they got a lease already on the space. There's so many hoops to jump through. I just don't think it's gonna happen in Belmar. But if it did, and here's the thing I, I want everybody to think about, if it did, even all three of those kind of different facilities I talked about, every single one would generate a fee towards the borough from whatever, whatever business they're doing, whatever transactions we would get. It doesn't have to be a retail spot that's actually doing business with the public. All three of those kind of facilities provide monies to the municipality where they're located. And I've seen towns like Massachusetts has had legalized recreational cannabis for about two and a half years. And I saw one, now their fee structure is definitely a little different than New Jersey's. It's actually higher. But one town I saw in the first eight months of having a one recreational dispensary was able to, they generated one point three million dollars in extra revenue. And I don't think that's something that we would want to shut the door on, even if it's not likely that someone's gonna come here. And that's one of the reasons I would say we should just, at the most, we should ask people in town, how do you think about having a recreational retail cannabis store? You know, what do you think about that? But other than that, I think we're, we're basically better off standing pat because like, like I said, and, and Councilman Wong is right, Asbury Park is gonna be able to, I think they're gonna be able to do something, but again, they have the same parking problem. I'm not so sure that Asbury is where they're gonna have all these dispensaries. I think you're looking at locations like Route thirty-five in, in Wall or at some other town with strip malls with big parking lots. That's what they're looking for. They're not looking for Main Street in Belmar.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor, I have a few comments. So it was last weekend. Took a long walk on the boardwalk and stopped into one of our boardwalk oceanfront locations to get a slice of pizza and sat outside. And, you know, there were families sitting there. There were young adults, I would guess, probably teenagers sitting there as well as young kids. And someone came up on the street, smoking a marijuana cigarette right in front of this establishment. And was not at all shy about blowing a smoke in the direction of the restaurant or the patrons sitting outside enjoying their meal. And, you know, I just don't think whether you supported the legalization of marijuana or, or not, you know, that sends the right impression, just like we wouldn't want someone standing there with an open container or smoking a cigarette or cigar or something like that and convening patron. So I think that this ordinance that we have on tonight for second reading is a step in the, in the right direction to prohibit the use or the smoking in, in public places, for sure. But I have concerns about, you know, the sales of marijuana or the potential sales of marijuana in town. I understand Councilman Brennan's position that, you know, perhaps from a logistical standpoint, that this, we aren't the type of location that a retailer would be looking for, but we do have vacant space where West Marine used to be, Belmar Plaza, that has parking and potentially some other areas. And even without parking, you know, we do have a large influx of boats come in in the summer and I, I just don't know that. My concern is that we would become, you know, a destination point if we had retail sales marijuana in, in Belmar for folks to, to come solely for that purpose. And I, I am I, I just am uncomfortable with the with having that type of retail location in, in our community. So, you know, at this point, my position is, you know, I, I think we not only need to prohibit marijuana use in public places, but prohibit the, the sale of it as well.
Councilman Carvell?
Yes, I will chime in. So anybody that's seen the droves of people that get off the trains on Tuesday night and walk to Barag, I think, you know, realizes that selling medical marijuana, selling marijuana in town would just make that a stop. But so, you know, to Councilman McCracken's point, you know, I, I think that that that's a concern for me. My first inclination is to not, is to ban the sale. However, I would like to hear from, from the public on this and I'm wondering how we can do that. I mean, can we have a special meeting for that or a special section of the meeting, either the next time? You know, I, I guess I would hate to put a, an ordinance in place and then be, you know, have a you know, a petition come through that, that forces us the other way. So, you know, I'd like to hear from them to begin with, but one of the questions that I have would be, you know, what, what do we have to do or do we have to do anything to our zoning? Or should we be prepping ourselves by changing our zoning so that we can, if we do ultimately approve the sale, that, you know, we know where these places would be? So that, that's one question that I have. I don't, can, can you answer that, Patrick?
Yes, I can. So that's essentially what Mr. Dasky is asking everybody to consider is how how the borough wants to adopt an ordinance to limit or prohibit the sale, cultivation, distribution, et cetera, of marijuana in its borders. For example, you can designate, I'm not, not too familiar with all the specific zones for Borough Belmar, but say there's an highway commercial zone like Galway, zoning board attorney there, you can designate that specific zone or a portion thereof as the permitted, as a conditionally permitted use or permitted use for marijuana cultivation sale, et cetera. Alternatively, you can permit it within the entire borough itself, or you can say, no, it's not allowed to be permitted anywhere. So that's kind of what we're asking you to consider is how do you want to approach? Do you want to limit it to a specific zone? Do you want to prohibit it outright? Or do you want to have it free rein? You can come into the borough and any zone is is permitted.
Understood. Yeah, thank you for that. And, you know, my final thought on this is that it sounds like if we decide to, whatever we decide to do, we're stuck with that decision for five years. Is that accurate?
No, so it's an opt-in ordinance or an opt-out, depending on which way of the inverse you want to phrase it. So we have a hundred and eighty days to act. But then if you don't act within that hundred and eighty days, you're opted out and you're not permitted to adopt any ordinance for five years. And then after five years, you're permitted an additional hundred and eighty days to either change your mind. However, say you make the most strict, we're gonna go to the extreme, make the most strict zoning ordinance that the borough adopts that prohibits marijuana everywhere. Three months down the line, you know, you know what? I want to loosen the restrictions. You can do that. You just can't heighten the restrictions. You can't opt in to the permissions of the act after you go past the deadline.
Really? Okay. So, so that, so you can loosen the restrictions whenever you want?
Correct. It's just, it's just amending, amending your zoning ordinance and just taking away the restrictions. You just can't further them.
All that, okay. So, you know, I, the, the way that I look at this. Yeah, I'm sorry. Did you have one other comment?
No, I saw Mr., I saw Councilman Brennan.
I was wondering if you could give me an example of like what the loosening would be? I mean.
So hypothetically, say the borough bans marijuana cultivation, sale, distribution, et cetera, in the entire borough. Now, one year down the line, the borough reexamines everything, sees how other towns. Now, one year down the line, the Borough reexamines everything, sees how other towns are acting, see how um. Uh how if it's benefiting or worsening, what have you, the Borough can adopt another ordinance saying. Alright, I'm pursuing the ordinance two thousand twenty one dash seventeen, we limited, uh we prohibited uh marijuana cultivation in the Borough. Um, now we want to amend that ordinance to permit mar- to permit marijuana cultivation and say your industrial zone. And only permit it there, that would be, that's what I'm saying as far as like loosening the or loosening the protection.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank, thank you, and and so my my final sort of thought on this would be, you know, the. You know, this is so new in the state that, you know, you actually said like, you know, as as. As towns start to enact ordinances or or frameworks for for this um. You know, there. You know, we we could, we could put the most stringent restrictions on, see how things start to work out uh over time and then. Opt to, you know, put things in place as we see how things are working, so, you know, I I I think. Like I don't, I don't see a drawback to putting the most. Strict um. You know, the most strict restrictions on because we have the option to undo that in the future, whereas. It sounds like the if we go the opposite direction, we can't. Say, oh, we made a mistake and we went too soft, so. Those, that's, that's my input on this.
Thanks.
And.
I want to piggyback on what Mr. Caravelli said. I think it's really important, it's a Faulkner Act town um that we definitely know that the public supports whatever actions we take. Because all they're gonna have to do is get a petition together and then we're gonna have to pay for a referendum. And uh, you know, I just don't see the point of paying for an election we might not need. I think really what we need to do is try to get input from residents and find out where that where their desires really lie.
I agree, Tom.
Oh, good, Pat.
No, I I agree with Tom, I'd like to know how the residents feel about this um. I think it's, I think that I agree with you, Tom, on that one.
Thanks.
After after uh listening to Patrick, I, you know, I had my own thoughts on it because, you know, somebody restrictions that. If we didn't pull it, put in a full ordinance in place would be to uh. Make sure it was followed the the enhanced drug laws that that are already out there like a thousand feet within school zones or recreation areas or. Uh, but. I mean, now after listening to what Patrick had to say, it'd probably be the best to go the strictest route. And then let somebody come in and give us their whole plan of how they wanna do it. And then you could just designate like that area if if it's a plan that we really wanna put in place. Um, and then take each application or somebody coming to us to say, hey. You know, this is how we operate, you know, this is how we do it, and at that time. Take a look at it uh instead of saying, okay. We'll allow it, but it's gonna be, we're gonna follow the the drug-free school zone uh limitations. And the recreational areas, because we don't want it around with thousand square feet of uh school zones or. Any of the parks or playgrounds or any of our recreation areas. Um, so that'd be something the way out if if we put the most, just say we're not having it, but then if somebody comes to say, hey, listen. Uh, we're a big company, this is what we do, this is how we do it, and we take that. Spot to take a real good look at it and say, okay. They're they're a company, they know how to handle it, you know, it's just not somebody coming in here and uh. Opening up a store and throwing it in there, nobody knows how it operates and it's the unknown of of how they do it. I know Councilman Brennan said about the money end of it, but I know uh. Looking at the law, you get towns get two percent of, I guess, the sales tax of it, so it's not. You know, if you were getting fifty percent of the sales tax or or the the, I guess. Uh, the the number, I I don't think it would be a really big number unless they're doing super big volume, but.
No, no.
Um, um, so. You know, I had one thought process on it, but now would now listen to the Patrick um. You know, it it's something that we'll have to think about, but we're not acting on anything tonight, I wanted to bring it out there because, you know, we only have, we're. We're under a time limit to do something uh. Dad, uh, Mr. Dasty and I have talked, discussed it, so I wanted to bring, get it out there and get everybody's opinion on it. Uh, we'll think about it before we act. And uh, we'll see where it goes from there.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna just to clarify, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna clarify just one part, um, it wouldn't. The Borough wouldn't be permitted to do it as a case by case basis where say like a big company came in. And then grant that company permission to cultivate marijuana in a specific zone, it actually would have to. Rezone that specific spot. Al alternatively, that company would actually have to go to the zoning board, receive experience approval, then go to the planning board, receive planning board approval. And then it would, then it would be able to be implemented, but it couldn't be on a case by case, it would have to be presented with the situation and then rezone.
Right, I mean, like most, like a lot of developments that come in, they they have to go through the boards and so. Um, and it would be like the same principles if the uh developers coming in and he's not following the guidelines of what's in place, then they would have to go. Come before the mayor and council, grant it, send it to the planning board and and do that same process is that whatever you're uh. Explaining to us.
Essentially, yes, but the boroughs, yes, I think we're on the same page. Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it it could be like if if, you know, we you have a real reputable company comes in. And they say that, uh, listen, we wanna put it here, we're outside the school zones, uh. Uh, this is how we wanna handle it, this is how our other stores are, we go take a look at it and and we're satisfied that they know how to handle. Uh, all the ins and outs of of retail of the cannabis. Uh, and then at that time, we we could, we could. Say, okay, council agrees, send it over to planning board zoning wherever we have to send it. And do it that way.
That could be permitted, I'm gonna have to definitely look into that, because I haven't, I haven't ever heard of that. Type of way of handling it as far as this whole new process is because it's such a relatively brand new law. I'll double check and get back to you on that.
Alright. But we we're not acting on it, we're we're just, we're having a conversation between the governing body to see which way we're gonna handle it and uh so. Nothing, nothing's being decided tonight, so we'll we'll have more discussion, I don't know, I'm sure. Alright, thank you, everybody, that's all I have for workshop, does anybody have anything else before we move on? Alright, April, we'll approve the minutes.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May fourth meeting?
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone please?
Okay, reports of council, Councilman Carvallo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, I actually had two meetings since our last meeting uh. Both concerning the same um. The same matter, uh, the T D R C met and also the planning board met yesterday. Uh, that we approved unanimously uh. Rooftop dining on uh at the beach house um. And um. Seems like it's gonna be um, I think it's a good thing uh for them and and I'm eager to see that uh get into place. Uh, one of the things that did come out both from the T D R C and uh from the planning board discussion was um. The parking uh that's being utilized in the municipal lot, uh, I guess. A number of businesses are counting the parking spaces within that municipal lot. Um, as to to. Serve as, you know, their their spots, so there's a question as to how many times. Spots are being counted or whatnot, so I think the council uh is gonna see a recommendation from the planning board. To actually do a parking study in and around uh that area. Um, I I do think that there's, you know, there's gonna be. A lot of, uh, look, guys, in my opinion, this is a good problem to have, right, we have, we have people coming to town, we have. Uh, businesses going in that people wanna visit and uh I'd rather have um more. I'd rather be have more people, less spots available than than an over, than an overabundance of empty spots. So I I think this is a good problem to have, but I I do think it's something that we're going to need to uh. Address, so um, that's what came out of uh out of that meeting um. And uh, that's, that's really all I had to report on tonight.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember McCracken.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, couple updates, you know, here this evening. Uh, I I am not the liaison to the library board, uh, but I just wanted to share that after the. Belmar Elementary and Saint Rose um kids planted trees. In observance of Arbor Day, Sharon Russell Fowler and Louis and I, and there might have been some others around. Had a, you know, a very informal conversation about the opening of the library, obviously, they're very concerned and don't want to. You know, open the library to public use and until it's safe. Uh, but it's apparent that uh, you know, there's some at least exterior painting. That needs to be done at the library and some windows that need to be replaced. And Sharon um shared with me that um she has a a capital review committee. That's working on uh these issues uh and getting proposals to uh paint the window trim and replace the windows. Which are a part of the the barrier to to reopening uh the library, because there's problems with the windows opening and closing and. And uh, stuff like that, so I just thought I'd share that uh, you know, Sharon shared with me that she does have a. Subcommittee that's uh looking into that and uh getting proposals for uh the maintenance of that building. I also wanted to uh bring up the several months ago. We uh tabled the invasive plant ordinance, uh because we were waiting to see what the Borough of Lake Como did. Um, Lake Como has um. Finalized and passed her um invasive plant ordinance. Uh, and I know that our uh attorney is reviewing that. And uh drafting an ordinance for us to review in the future, so I just uh wanted to make sure that that's. Um, something that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention to tonight, um, you know, because that's uh something that uh, you know, the shade tree periodically. This committee periodically discusses and uh I know was sort of a pending item. That was out there. Um, speaking of the shade tree committee, uh, the meeting is tomorrow night at six. At the municipal building, using masks, social distancing. I shared in the last meeting what a fantastic job that group of volunteers did to distribute trees throughout town. And uh plant trees and 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 rec in observation of uh Arbor Day. Also, I know several folks may have seen in the. In the news that the governor signed an order allowing municipalities to. Uh, have a tax deduction program, a property tax relief program uh where. Belmar residents can benefit. If they shop local at Belmar businesses, I know that some municipalities have been doing this for some years. Uh, and I'm not fully versed on of the law that the governor signed, but I I know this is now a program that's permissible and available. Statewide and uh, you know, I just think it would be something that would be worthwhile to have um. The B B P or tourism or one of our groups look into. Work with our finance committee who's a group of of volunteers, you know, and see if this is something that would. Ultimately benefit our business community and our local residents. And if it would, um, you know, that should be something I think that we should uh look at uh down the road. Last thing, Mayor, I I just wanna talk about um. You know, uh, as council folks were in around and about town. And we get a lot of of feedback uh from residents and. You know, I'd just like to take a moment to talk, if you don't mind, about the uh the Mediterranean project. There are a lot of rumors circulating around town about that site and uh. Uh, it's apparent to me that a lot of um Belmar residents are are being led misled. As to the status of that site. Uh, and I think, you know, I just wanna take a moment and Mayor, if you wanna add anything on this. Them incorrect or or not being clear, but, you know, a Belmar resident owns that site out on Route thirty five where the Belmar Motor Lodge is and two. Um, catering places and uh, you know, he wants to improve it. Uh, and he's been working with a local contractor on on various designs. Uh, that might be suitable for that site. And Mayor, uh, in, you know, just the interest of. Not negotiating behind closed doors and not introducing uh a a project at. A council meeting where we're gonna take action, like you asked the property owner and the developer to present conceptual um proposal. At a council meeting and receive feedback from members of the council and members of the public. Uh, which was done, um, and frankly, in my experience, uh, the years that I've been in town. That is not a process that was always done in the past, um, and I think that the fact that. Um, that property owner and that potential developer had the opportunity to come and and talk about some concepts. Was a was a good thing and an opportunity for uh. For people to have a discussion and us as council members to get some uh feedback um. And and that's where we are, and I think it's very apparent. From uh the comments of the members of the council at that meeting. That we had a lot of questions about it and we uh gave the um developer and the owner some very constructive um. Feedback that I would hope that they're taking back uh and and looking at um. Our comments and and then digesting the questions that we asked. And taking them into consideration as they look at this property in the future. And uh, and any designs that they may have, and I think what we need to be clear, uh, there is no formal proposal. To the council or this property uh at this time. And when and if there ever is, there will be a process that will include. Um, residents and certainly the council, since it's in the Seaport redevelopment zone and others. Um, and there will be extensive comment and feedback and um suggestions to to be given, so. Um, you know, I just wanted to take a moment here in my report to to clarify. That that is the status and that um. You know, if people have, you know, any, you know, more specific questions as to how individual council members feel about the project or. Um, status of the the project, right now, as far as I know, there isn't any, this was just a conceptual design that was presented to the council. You know, folks can reach out to us and get uh, you know, up to date and us or Borough Hall to get up to date um information. That's all I had, Mayor.
Yeah, I I mean, you're correct, um, um. Our planner, uh, the developer heard what had to be said, um. We took a a serious look at that petition that was was presented to us, we let the developer know about that. And uh. He'll be looking to reduce all of the sum of it and represent it back to us, but there was certainly no action taken. And every property owner has the right to come in here and ask conceptually if this is something we would like to see in our town. So, uh, we'll take, uh, we'll wait and see and see what the developer has, what changes he makes and and see what he listens to and represent it. So, but that's where it is now, uh, we'll wait for him and he he listened to the public, he listened to us, uh. We informed him about the petition and um. And to look at all those issues, let's see if he wants to make changes and then come back to us. Alright, thank you, uh, Councilmember McCracken, uh, Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Harbor Commission had a meeting last Tuesday um. The uh parking behind Borough Hall came up, there they also, members of the commission are very interested in having um. Some of the parking along Railroad Avenue be reserved for slip leaseholders down at the. End of the marina down by the bridge, I doc, J doc, K doc, um. So they could be in the same situation as uh people that slipped on B dock. So they could be in the same situation as people that slipped on B Doc or C Doc, they get a. There's a reserved parking space for them, a parking area. And also maybe the possibility of putting in paid parking somewhere along. Railroad Avenue back there behind where Borough Hall is. Other than that, it's more good news about the Marina. I mean, they're between ninety and ninety five percent full. And it's really quite likely, if not this year, then next year, they're going to be at a hundred percent capacity and we're going to need to plan on how to deal with that. Which is again, it's a great problem to have, like as Congressman Carvelly said, it's a great problem now. So they're moving right along. They're looking, they're ready for a busy summer. They've done a lot of renovations, all the awnings, a lot of things have been done. There's still more work to be done. But they'll get to it. And if, if the Marina keeps filling up the way it does, the way it has. We're definitely going to be able to do some more work to the, to the Marina. And, and one of the things. That I noticed in the budget that's being put in tonight. Is the big increase in slip fees from this, from last year to this year. And last year was a good year and we're still, we're still going to make way more money. At the Marina and that all goes into the general fund as most of you know, it's not like the beach money where it has to be used at the beach. The, it's, the Marina belongs to Belmar. And that means that any revenues generated from it go right into the general fund and we can use them for whatever we need, whatever we need. I want to thank the staff at Borough Hall and at DPW for putting together the plant order for the. Beach planting. It's not going to happen until end of October, beginning of November, but we found last year that because we didn't order the plants early. We didn't get everything that we needed to do the job. So we're going to get a really big order and most of the beach should be done this fall. A very small planting might be needed in 2022, but we'll just see, we'll wait and see with that. And that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the, on the Marina, we do have. The token machine for the ramp operational, so that should save us on people driving through the gate at three in the morning when they don't have tokens. Let's hope. So, but that, that is operational. I know, I know we talked at the Harvard Commission meeting, but it's been put in and it's operational right now. But thank you. Council President Wong.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I didn't have any meetings with my committees this week, but. Next week I'll back to ADA meeting and. Excuse me, Parks and Recreation. We did have community policing. Our zone chiefs had their meetings. We have one more coming up tomorrow night, the South Zone and the chiefs will have their meetings. The response has been wonderful. Zone chiefs have really picked up and I think Mayor, the community policing program is starting to develop what you wanted it to be. And it kind of has a life of its own. It's, the response has been wonderful. Once the zone chief, the South Zone meets tomorrow night, then we will all meet, put this. All the recommendations and the questions together. The police have been wonderful. They've been absolutely wonderful working with the zone chiefs and working with us. They're, they're really. Involved in it and, and I'm very happy to hear that and report that to you. So it's doing very well. I just want to remind people that we're going to have a Memorial Day service on Memorial Day, the 31st of May down at Memorial Park at nine thirty AM. Hope you can all make it. It's always a lovely service. I have, Mayor, I don't know if this is a spot, but I've had some questions. I had some people call and, and have some questions. I don't know if this is the place for it or should I wait till later?
No, go ahead.
Okay. One of the questions was the municipal parking where the barriers are for the restaurants to have their. Seating out in the parking lot. Are they going to stay or is that going to be removed?
Well, well, we're discussing it now because as, as restaurants are opening up to a hundred percent capacity, they still have to social distance. So that's one of the areas we're looking at. Do we allow them to keep the outdoor dining through the summer? To try to recoup some of the revenue that they've lost for the year. We know parking is, is a major issue. So. You know, we're weighing out all our options on that to say to the businesses this summer. We, we know that the difficulties they had last year. So we're, we're weighing it out to let them continue through the summer. And then take the parking back come September and October after they have a. A good, hopefully knock on wood, a good summer. We're working on it.
Okay, great. Someone else had called. This, this had come up before, I believe before, possibly before COVID, having to do with a one-way street. This would be K Street from 13th Avenue to 14th. Will this be a one-way street? And I think it had been discussed before. Is it possible that it will be discussed again, taken up and when can this happen?
Yeah, I, I thought we did a traffic study on that. We were gonna make it a one-way and I, I, I thought that was. To take a look at, because I know we, we did a traffic study on it and the recommendation was to make it one-way. So I, I don't know where the, the disconnect was. Yeah. So we'll, we'll, we'll check into that.
Okay, thank you. And that's, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things. I just want to let everybody know that Memorial Day is coming. We have. Which was really great news. We have eighty-two lifeguards coming back this year and it's almost like. According to our chief lifeguard, it's unheard of that we have that many returning. So I'm so happy about that. We've, our beach director has been having meetings with everybody that's going to be working on the beach front. We have enough people to open up the season. And with the new system that we have coming in place, hopefully we got our fingers crossed, everything goes nice and smooth. But we'll be ready to go for Memorial Day weekend. Taylor Pavilion will begin selling the season badges at Taylor. Taylor Pavilion, May twenty-second and the arrows will be twelve to five. And then starting the twenty-ninth, the pickup arrows will become nine, nine AM to five PM. And then of course, you know, buying badges online is BelmarBeachBadges.com. So if anybody still needs to pick up their beach badges. Starting on May twenty-second, that'll be the start of the daily beach badge advance. You could buy your daily beach badges. So you make sure that you have a spot on the beach and you can buy them in advance, starting May twenty-second. Let's see, Friday night concerts will begin on the twenty-eighth at six PM at Piano Plaza. The Academy Charter High School students reef dedication, May twenty-eighth at eleven AM at Home Plate on Memorial Field. And that's going to honor the African-American Baseball League and the Black History Month. Since we found out that our field was so important back then. And we had so many great athletes come out of that. So that'll be a nice event that they're going to have. Pat already said about. Our veterans service celebration on Memorial Day. Nine thirty, we also have the firemen do their service at nine o'clock before the vets do theirs. Friday night, May twenty-eighth at five PM, we're naming and dedicating the Public Safety Building, Tent and Ocean to Howard Roland. So that'll be five PM on the twenty-eighth. Think that's all I have. So that's pretty much the update. We're getting into the summer season and hopefully we can get back to some kind of normalcy with some of these events that are going to be going on. So that's all I have and we'll. We'll move on. What do we got? Public session on the agenda, on the resolution items.
So this is a public comment session on the resolutions only. If you would like to speak regarding a resolution. Please click the raise hand button or dial star nine by phone. And when you are called on, please state your name and address.
Standby and no hands.
Can I have a motion to close the public session? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
Second.
Councilman Carvelly?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Wosfer?
Yes.
Okay, first ordinance we have is second reading and public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-one eight. This is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine for water sewer rates and service charges. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please click the raise hand button and state your name and address.
One hand, standby.
Mr. Kramer? Yeah, Eugene Premer, Fort Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, everybody. Regarding the, I guess I have a couple of questions on the. On the water rates. Number one is why are the rates higher for higher volume buyers?
Well, well, we have a two-tier system. So when they, when somebody is using a, a lot of water like restaurants and stuff like that, they, they tax our system more. So. It's only fair that they pay more money.
All right, you say tax the system. I guess I could understand that. Although I was unaware that, that we had any shortage of water in town. The other, the other, I did contact of Belmar and. Also South Mama, the Regional Storage Authority, you know, the sewer plant on Eighteenth Avenue. And. According to. According to the Belmar's records, Belmar sold, you know, two hundred and forty-five million gallons of water in the year twenty twenty. And. South Mama's Regional Sewerage Authority. Treated three hundred and seventy-eight million gallons of water. So you have a difference there from what. The borough sold and, and spend the meters. Of. A hundred and thirty-three million gallons of water.
I, I understand what you're talking about and that is a big issue that our finance committee has been discussing and going over with our engineers. Because with our old infrastructure, every time the water table raises, rises, it is infiltrating our sewage system. Because of the age of the pipes and the joints that fit together. But this is one of the things that our newly formed finance committee is going over everything with the water department. And we've been having major discussions on how we're going to move forward to combat that because. I think Belmar is, because we talked to Sewerage Authority, there's one of the highest that has these water infiltrations and. And you can see the numbers where they climb every time we have a heavy rain or settle, you know. Some of it is some of the piping of subpumps going in, but most of it, talking to all our engineers is. Water infiltration into the, the, the sewer system when, when we have heavy rains. And that's something that absolutely needs to be straightened out because we're paying a lot of money to treat rainwater.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's the reason that the sewage rate is so much higher than the, than the clean water rate. And. Back to, back to the rates for high-volume users. Last night, the brewery had an application in front of the planning board for rooftop dining. And I took a look at their billings or water usage and. The, I guess they run probably average about a hundred thousand gallons a quarter. And. To, to then throw on top of that, a sewage charge. Which, which, which exceeds the cost of the water. It's got to be a big disincentive for businesses. The, the other thing is it somewhat stifles the use of water, future uses of water. And what I mean by that is such things as fuel, fuel cells and so on. And if it continues to cost more to dispose of water that you're purchasing from the town. That's really a disincentive. But I'm glad you're, I'm glad it's a being investigated, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming to you, Sheri.
Sherri Russo, twelve eighteen Briarwood, Woodham, Belmar. My quick question is, is have we ever thought about selling? I don't even know if selling is the right word to a larger water company. I know that other places I've lived in New Jersey, water was about thirty dollars a quarter. Obviously it's not that here and a lot of people have told me it's because that we are not run by a larger company. And I feel that if it saves residents so much money, perhaps that would be a possibility.
That's a possibility. I mean, we're looking at, our newly formed finance committee is looking at all options because we know. The water rates in town and the upkeep and trying to stay with all the state standards on, on water and. Trying to get, is becoming difficult for towns like our size and all the little towns along the shore. To, to try to keep up with the costs and, and, and every time there's more regulations from DEP. Put on the water. I mean, you've seen what happened around last year, what happened around the state where. There were, there were towns that had to dig up every street and change every pipe because they couldn't meet the regulations. So. It's something that we're really taking a look at.
And my other question on the water is, for instance, when I bought my rental property, the old landlord there had pumped the sub-pump. Down into the sewer. And. Am I correct that that does affect the rates?
Yes.
And if so, is it a possibility to remedy that in some kind of a way?
Well, anytime code enforcement goes in to do an inspection, that's one of the things that they have to take a look at and. You know, we're, we're considering with the Sewerage Authority to start looking at doing some smoke tests, but there's a whole process that you have to go through to do that. So. And then if we smoke test some of the, the sewer system, we'll be able to find those people who pipe in their, their. Roof drains and subpumps and different things like that. But it's a, it's a process that you have to go through. You have to make sure all the residents know that we're going to do it in each area. And so we're, we're taking a look at that and probably that's going to start happening pretty soon.
All right, there's no way to do that just off like. I don't know, a way to figure out who has a some pump. I mean, I'm assuming that piping in the smoke is expensive or am I wrong there?
Yeah, well, definitely costly. It's, but anytime code enforcement finds something like that, we usually work with the homeowner to try to get it piped right into the storm drain. And I know DPW has been doing a lot of that. So when code enforcement goes into Inspector House or fire officials and they see anything like that, they make sure that they. Notify DPW to get over there and make sure to disconnect all that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. No hands.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can I have a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-one eight?
Motion. Second.
Okay, Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next is second reading and public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-one nine. This is an ordinance amending chapter eighteen, which is beachfront rules and regulations. If you'd like to comment on this ordinance, please raise your hand and state your name and address.
No hands?
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-one nine?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next is second reading and public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-one ten. This is an ordinance amending chapter sixteen for regulation of conduct in public parks and recreation areas. If you'd like to comment on this ordinance, please click the raise hand and state your name and address.
No hands?
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-one ten?
Don't move.
Second.
Hey, Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Councilwoman Juan, yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next we have first reading and introduction of ordinance two thousand twenty-one eleven. This is a bond ordinance appropriating one point five million for bonds and notes. Do we have a motion to offer for first reading?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinance two thousand twenty-one ten or twelve. This is an ordinance replacing our chapter thirty-five, which is flood damage prevention ordinance. We have a motion to offer for first reading and introduction.
Motion. Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
And next is bond ordinance two thousand twenty-one thirteen, which is amending bond ordinance number two thousand twenty forty-two. Do we have a motion to offer for first reading and introduction?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Hey, Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Walsifer?
Oh, we're going too fast here.
Two thousand twenty-one fourteen. This is an ordinance of the borough Belmar to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits since we establish a cap bank. We have a motion to offer for first reading and introduction.
Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, and last is ordinance two thousand twenty-one fifteen, establishing procedures and standards regarding small wireless facilities and public right-of-ways. Do we have a motion to offer for first reading and introduction?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, yeah.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes. Okay, on the public comments.
Before we open it up to the public, I have a couple of questions I received by email to be read into the record. The first one is from Anita Pecorelli of First Avenue. She has two questions. One is the treats, the tree seedlings that the students from Belmar and St. Rose planted at the library, is it true that they were pulled out and given away?
Councilman McCracken? That is not necessarily true. The, and that, you know, like I said, the Shade Tree Commission is meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. So there was a ceremony that was held at the Belmar Public Library, and the students planted the seedlings. But not enough seedlings were delivered in time for those who wanted those to plant them at your house, their houses at the tree giveaway. So they were temporarily repurposed, but those trees, those planters are going to be used for those seedlings to grow and germinate to place trees around town.
Thank you.
And the second question was, does town have a master plan for roadwork? Are you planning to pave any? It's almost summer with heavy traffic coming to Eighth Avenue, at least needs attention. Is there a schedule for roadwork?
Yes, our engineers are, have a schedule. I know we're finishing up Fifteenth Avenue. We were praying that Twelfth Avenue was going to be finished before summer. And I think the next one is River, at River Road, yeah, so that one, and then, but I'm not sure after that, that, what the schedule is, but yeah, we do have a schedule, and the engineers are working on that.
Next one is from Maria Rondanero of twelve forty-six Pine Tree. She says, at the Friends of the Library book sale this past weekend, Belmar residents were asking about the library still remaining closed. Now that COVID numbers are lower, more people are vaccinated and used to wearing masks indoors, when can we expect the library to open again to the public?
Meeting with the library, Roe is going to give me a call tomorrow, we're going to discuss that, when we're going to open the library.
Last one is from Bob Lynch of three sixteen Ninth Avenue, has two questions. One, can the mayor and council earmark some of the new parking revenue from Silver Lake and Lake Como to fund movies on the beach?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have movies on the beach this summer. August, we should have the screen here, and they will be back on the beach.
Okay, and second one is, it says, before we put up the for-sale sign on the Third Avenue garage, can the DPW and Water Works comment on the well that is located there? And the third Ave garage provides significant beach utility storage, do we build the beach utility for the winter storage, and if so, do we know the amount?
Yeah, I mean, when I mentioned that, it's, it's only things that we look at with borough property. There's nothing set in stone on that, and of course, we would talk to DPW and everybody that's involved before any decision like that is ever made. It's just that with the first aid building being up for sale at this time and taking a look at whether we should pursue trying to negotiate for the sale. You know, that, that's one of the things that we would take a look at, we'd look at other properties to try to offset the cost, but nothing set in stone. Of course, we would absolutely want to find out what's in that building and see what exactly what it's used for before we do anything.
That was all I had. So, John, we can go to those who have raised their hands, and just remember to please state your name and address.
Okay, thank you, April. Going with Linda Sharkis, stand by.
Everybody.
Linda.
Last night I attended the planning board meeting as well.
I could just, just stop you, I, I, we know who you are, but can you just give us your name and address for the record?
Linda Sharkis, Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
So I attended the planning board meeting, and it was a real eye-opener. When Beach House Brewery received approval, there was concerns about the traffic, the, the density of people going into the building. And one of the things that was discussed is on the first floor at their bar, occupancy is at ninety-seven. The restaurant on the second floor, a hundred. The brew pub, two hundred and forty. That's four hundred and thirty-seven person facility, and they just opened up seating to at a hundred and fifty-two, bringing the total to five eighty-nine. And all of the planning board, all they were required to do is provide five parking spaces. So I think we have a problem with how parking is assigned, because the comments made last night by people on the committee was that there wouldn't be a problem with parking. I look at only having to give five park, five spots for a hundred and fifty-two people is a serious problem in town. And we're looking at the River Road Route Thirty-five project being short of parking. We need to really come up with a plan. It's more fundamental, because I've worked, there are three ways a business could assign parking through public parking spots, onsite parking, or through payment to the borough. And I think what surprised me is the comments were made that they shouldn't the Beach House Brewery shouldn't be responsible for, since they only need five parking spaces for most of this off, this new payment, which would go to a parking garage. And yet, when you look at the businesses right on the square, they're small. I mean, we're going to lose those businesses if patrons can't find a parking space in town. Now, I hope we could come up with a plan that allows these other businesses to have parking and not be consumed by the Beach House Brewery. In the meeting, everybody, they talk about off-hours, you know, their, their residents, resident businesses in that building were luncheon places. Well, Beach House Brewery will be serving lunch on the rooftop. So it's really going to be a density problem with parking, not to mention gridlock trying to get in and out of town. I hope we could find a way to accommodate all the cars and the traffic. Because I guess I wasn't happy what I heard from our planner regarding five space being sufficient. On the practical side tells you that five won't work for a hundred and fifty-two seats. Would anybody?
So, yeah, Linda, I, you know, I, I was obviously there, I'm on the planning board, and I, I don't think that there wasn't any concern on the members of the planning board about the parking. I think that they were concerned, however, the Beach House is meeting the, the specs for, for that zone. So I don't, I don't think we can turn them down if they're, if they're able to meet the, the requirements for that zone. So that's the first thing, and I think the, you know, the, the other, I said this in my report, that, you know, the, the planning board is going to recommend to council that we do do a, a parking study and try to assess, you know, what, what the situation is, and, and out of that might come some of the changes that I think that you're talking about. The other thing is that, and I'm sorry, let me just finish this one, please. The other thing is that they, they did have a traffic engineer. And I know that they were talking about, you know, all the neighboring businesses and how those businesses may or may not impact the necessary parking, but you know, like, you know, that, that I, I can see that a little bit of wave handing there, but you know, the, the one thing that they did say, and I sort of can follow this logic as well, is that yes, the, all of the space, you know, between the, the three different stories is whatever, five hundred and something seats. But a, a majority of the interior space on the second floor, which used to be the brewery, would probably not be occupied when people, when the weather is nice enough to go outside and utilize the outside space and, and vice versa. You know, I think they're gonna, I, I think ultimately that they're going to have limited utility there, because when it's August at high noon, I don't think anybody's going to want to be sitting on the roof there with no cover. So I, that part of the traffic engineer's argument or assessment, I, I, I did follow.
Okay, but to, my concern is the development plan only requiring five spots for a density of a hundred and fifty-two people is the problem.
Yes, I agree.
And that's what needs to be changed, because that should never have been permitted. I mean, it's, it's ludicrous.
Well, Linda, we're going to take a look at the ordinance for that, because that, that's, that's what it requires, three spaces per thousand, so. Or three, it's three state spaces for, per hundred, but that's something that we're going to have to look at, at, at on the redevelopment plan.
And I, I agree, I think that's necessary, but the other point is public spots. How many times could you reassign a public spot for a business? And we don't know who those, what businesses have counted the public spaces. Because I know it was a meeting, at a meeting for Ninth Avenue, and they took some of the public spaces be, behind tailors. And you see this repeatedly, people talk about, you know, using those spaces. Well, I don't think we have enough to fulfill all the needs of the community, so.
And I think that that's what the, I think that that's what the traffic study would reveal, or the parking, I'm sorry, parking study would sort of, you know, identify all of that.
Yeah. Well, I think this has, should happen tomorrow, because we have a real problem with all these things coming into town, before we permit any more businesses with that kind of density to open up. It's not, and I think the rooftop is a great idea, don't get me wrong, but it's the practical side is being missed on how to get, how to move traffic around town with that kind of influx. Or, you know, and then we're going to have Ubers, and they talked about buses, who's going to ride a bus to Belmar? If you're lucky, you can get somebody on the train, but, you know, we need a, a place for drop-off, and a lot of different options need to be examined. Anyway, I'm hoping we figure out parking, because it's not even the paid stuff, it's the, you know, all the other requirements of our new businesses, and I don't want to see this, the large business kill the smaller patrons and, and businesses in town. I mean, we have a nice restaurant row. This could potentially kill it, and I hope it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that into consideration, and we're, we're going to be looking at the parking.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman McCracken?
Just had one thing, and I think it was twenty fifteen, the BD did a parking study for the commercial develop, for the commercial area downtown and that surrounding area. Obviously, it's outdated at this point, but I have a copy of it, and if that would be helpful to the, the planning board or the zoning board, whoever's evaluating this issue, if people doesn't have it in Borough Hall, I could, you know, make copies.
Yeah, we can get a copy, we'll give it to our engineer, because he would be, he'd be doing the, the parking study.
Yeah.
Be helpful, maybe we could just update that one.
Okay. Thank you. Going to Dr. Jody Kenny, stand by. Go ahead.
Thank you, John. I'm mayor and council. Kenny, four hundred tenth Avenue. I was wondering if we know anything about junior guards? I was wondering if we know anything about junior guards this summer for the kids.
Our business administrator can help you with that question.
Great.
I, we're working on that now to try to figure out what we're going to do with junior guards. There's some issues with financial obligations for the program, but we're looking into that. With the social distancing guidelines still in place on the beach, we have a call Thursday with the governor about beach operations. So hopefully within the next few days, we'll have an idea. We're looking at the difficulties that they have with not having tournaments or sponsors. So we're taking all that in consideration. Like I said, lots going to depend on what happens with our call with the governor on Thursday.
Okay, great, just because it's such a great source of, of, you know, socialization for the kids. They missed it last year. It's such a good source of exercise for them, too. So I'm a huge advocate of the junior guards program. So if we could bring back that back, it would be so great for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Stand by. And looking at my list to make sure it's fair, and we're going to Sir Tom Volker, please, stand by.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Oh, guys, thanks, guys. I don't know why this is always a problem for me. Might have something to do with my age, but probably not. Number one, I congratulate you and your team on a zero increase on the budget.
No, thanks, Tom.
Can only imagine how tough that was to do. Especially when we're talking about infrastructure and and water and the loss of, you know, we're paying for water, we don't pay for rainwater, basically. I don't know how fast it is, I don't know. But yet hopefully, we're we're looking ahead towards that, you know, keep doing, I don't know, there's another word for it, but doing a kitty for that. And and a kitty for parking, which is not going to get any better. It's, I mean, thank God, we're a popular town and we've got great businesses here. I'm really thrilled with that. But we, you know, we need to plan for these things. And to present a zero budget, when you, we all know that we need to plan for these things is is just simply amazing. I'm also very, very glad that you're addressing the issue of pot shops and all that goes along with it. I've been very concerned, I won't say where I am on either issue, but the fact is that it's happening and we have to be ready for it. I'm sure it's a tremendous challenge to the police to do what they have to do. And and a lot of good comments were made on here by the different council people as far as, you know, pros and cons. So therefore, I salute you for for allowing us to talk about it and and see where we stand eventually. I, I, I too don't like the idea that Verizon is coming in here and telling us what we should do with with our property and and when the hell did that ever get permitted? But they're utilities, so they get away with it, I get. So, you know, I know you guys are on the wall, as they say, ready girding yourselves for this onslaught from Verizon. And I salute you. If I can hold your horse, I'll be happy to do it. Now, also, the, oh, I could just just a question. On the daily badges, as you said, May twenty second is when you will begin that. How does? These are daily badges. So if somebody wants one for Memorial Day or the day after, will the will the bracelet determine that? I have a, I have a need for knowing that the answer to that question.
I know. Well, what's gonna happen is you could buy in advance. This will be the first time. Normally, you used to have to come to the right to the beach on that day. So if you want to come this, you know, you're coming this Saturday or Memorial Day, you could buy it the Wednesday before. Now, you'll have the QR code, you still have to go to the booth. But now you're, you've bought your badge, you have guaranteed to get on that beach. So like if we have to limit badges, people know that before they leave their house. So if if you were able to purchase a bed, you get into, you'll be in that count of being allowed on the beach. So you can come down and then you take your your phone or your QR code, just go to the booth. They scan you and hand you your your wristband for the day.
For that particular day or for future days?
No, 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 it'll be like if you're buying it on a Wednesday for a Saturday, you arrive Saturday morning, just show your your QR code or it's on your phone. You get the wristband for that day. You you can't show up like on a Friday to get the wristband for Saturday because we, the colors change every single day and the style of it changes every day. So you at you at the gate, you'll know the color of the style of everybody coming on that day.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Volker, sir. A moment. Sharon, coming to you.
Okay, of course, my printer decides to print right now. Sorry about that. Sharon Mahoney, eight hundred Main Street. So I have a few things I want to bring up and I'd like patience as I get through these. I only come to these council meetings once in a while, so the pile's been growing. Anyway, first of all, I thank you, everybody, for, you know, getting through this, you know, COVID crisis and sticking through it and, you know, trying to do right by the residents. I know it hasn't been easy, so I do appreciate everybody's hard work and, you know, we're all in this together. So and we'll come out of it together, hopefully. Okay, first of all, if anybody doesn't know, spring like this year is not allowing food and drink on their beach beaches like they did last year. So that's just an FYI that that may flood more people to Belmar, who actually, you know, went to spring like last year to get away from the Belmar crowds. For the DPW, I have a couple of things. Um, now that the outdoor gathering limit is going to be removed as of tomorrow, are the bike racks going to be distributed back along the boardwalk?
We just discussed that with them today. Yes, they're all going back in place.
Awesome. Okay, I have another one for the DPW. Is anybody online from the DPW? No, not today. Okay. Um, I've seen way too many people, both on the beach, on the boardwalk and in around the lake feeding wildlife or leaving food out, you know, mostly bread for feathered friends. For for those who don't know, you know, human food should not be fed to our feathered friends. Bread especially is not good for them and also pollutes the water. So when I see it happening, I kindly ask the people to stop feeding them, that it's not allowed. And they look at me like I'm crazy, but I tend to explain why, then they sort of understand. Yesterday morning, I saw three piles of bread on the boardwalk between Eighth and Ninth Avenue, like basically long pieces of bread, long loaves that have been broken up. And then somebody left a bag hanging right by Ninth Avenue. So I picked up the bag, gathered all the bread, threw it in the bag and threw it away. It's clear it came from a restaurant of some sort because that's, you know, wasn't like, I actually asked seven eleven, you know, incognito, hey, do you guys make subs here? And they don't, so it didn't come from them, they have pre 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 wrapped food there like that. So it had to have come from a restaurant, who knows if it's a borough restaurant? But I believe that some education to our restaurants as well as to the public we needs to happen to help tell them, hey, please don't feed the wildlife, and this is why. Also, it leaves, you know, garbage around. So is there any way that we can add any signage along the beach? And then also, there used to be a sign at the dock on the lake, but it's not there anymore. So I'm not sure what happened to that. I think there's one on the, let's see, if you go down Eighth Avenue, make a left, there's one on that side of the lake I saw, like kind of in the in the grass. But as far as the one where the dock is, and that's where most of the people stand to look at the ducks and whatnot. Now, the, you know, the goslings and the sigos that are out there. And as soon as people walk up to the dock, the little ducks and the swans come over because they know they're going to be fed. So we need to have a sign there that basically says, please, and this is why. Because don't just say no, tell them why you're telling them that we don't want them fed. So if somebody can, you know, I'm sure there are signs around that we've had, maybe we have to buy some new ones, but can that be addressed?
Yes, we'll address that.
All right, thank you. Crosswalk, there are quite a few crosswalks in town that are non existent, like the paint has worn off. You can't see them at all. One of the worst ones I find when I do my walk over to the inlet is the one at Fifth and East Street. If you walk down E from Eighth Avenue and then you go to cross Fifth Avenue, I would love to have a stop sign there coming east because people fly down from the light down that road. And especially in the morning when the sun is sort of in their eyes, they can't see someone walking across the street. I've been almost hit a few times there, even as I'm trying to walk and kind of signaling to a car that, hey, I'm coming. They just fly by me and, you know, just don't even see me. So those lines are practically non existent at that corner right there. But also, maybe we, you know, put in something there to, you know, to curb the speeding down that street. It's a bit nuts. The lane striping and crosswalk signals at Eighth and Main. Mayor, you had mentioned that that stuff was sort of in the works. Where are we with that?
It's, they told us that it's all approved, we're just waiting, waiting for them to get here to do it. State of New Jersey, because it's a state road. We'll check to see where where we're at on the list, but I know it's been all approved to have it done when the traffic lights at Seventh and Fifth with timers for for walkers are supposed to be put in place as well as the one on Eighth. I think it was Eighth, Seventh and Fifth. Well, we're supposed to be already done, we were hoping that they would have been done before the summer. But our business administrator will check with the Department of Transportation and see where we are on that list.
Okay.
It is approved, though.
Okay, thank you. The bike sharrows, we've talked about these before. I first brought these up like probably five plus years ago with the town. What is happening with those, at least getting them on Main Street and on Ocean Avenue? I know the county said they will do it, the town just asked to ask them. So what's happening with that?
We haven't heard from the county that they will do it. There's an issue on Main Street because of the how narrow it is, but we'll check again. The county never told us they would do it. I will check with them again.
Okay, it's not a bike lane, the shallow is basically a share of the road thing. Yeah, you're looking Madison Square and Madison Square has them like they're sort of in the lane where the cars travel. So if that town can do it, why can't we? Yeah, okay, I'd like, because that's, you know, with, especially now when we talk about all these parking issues, there's a lot more bikes, bicycles in town, you know, that have been recently, and it's going to be in flux this summer. Crazy, and you see bikes on sidewalks and because cars are being, you know, they don't pay attention, cars right now. I don't think drivers should pay attention to anything. But anyway, I think that would that would really help to have that safety measure there.
Okay, and also, as far as the crosswalks painting, I met with DPW along with the mayor today. After the beach is open, we start painting our curbs and all our crosswalks and parking spaces. We just had to wait for the weather to cooperate, but that's going to happen in the near future.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um, garbage along the oceanfront in the off season, this past year was horrible. I know other towns that leave their garbage cans out in the winter, you know, you know, because people are still out and walking the boardwalk and whatnot. Is there a reason why we can't do that?
Problem is, on Ocean Avenue, we're actually getting new receptacles that are hopefully going to be stationary. But on Ocean Avenue, they turn into projectiles. If they get full and DPW is not working because of the wind change down there by the ocean, they just trash the entire Ocean Avenue. So either that or the cans end up in the ocean. So that's one of the problems.
Are there other options for different types of cans that other towns might use that are better?
We are, we have them on order, right? We have the new can, yeah, we're waiting for them to come in because they were ordered last September.
Right.
So they'll be permanent year round.
Okay, great, great. Because the biggest pile of trash that I see is by that playground across from seven eleven. You know, you look just to just beyond the boardwalk, on the ground in between the boardwalk and the fence, and it's just like one big garbage pile. And I know some of it has to do with the wind blowing it over there because people drop it on the other side, but still it's it's there. Okay, um, my last item is a bit lengthy, but I'm a writer, so bear with me. This one has to do with the car meetups. Belmar is starting to sound like Wall Stadium to me. I'd rather hear music from ice cream trucks, wind chimes, people enjoying themselves while dining or biking, not these blaring mufflers exploding exhaust pipes and insanely loud bass pumping music. All of these noises are very disturbing. I think we've all, you know, heard that from our residents as well and can sometimes sound like gunshots, which is even more frightening considering all the gun violence happening in our country right now. These loud noises can also be triggers for anyone dealing with PTSD, any kind of autism or any type of mental health issue. Many pets can also be negatively affected by these loud noises. So many of us are also dealing with fragile emotional states. And I'm, I have a proposal at the end of this, so just kind of bear with me. I really want Belmar to help, you know, solve this problem and, you know, help keep this town peaceful for our residents and some renters. I did reach out to our local legislature, Senator Singer, to confirm the statutes that govern motor vehicle noise. New Jersey statute RS thirty nine colon three dash sixty nine prohibits the installation or use of any device emits a device that emits an audible sound on the exhaust system of any motor vehicle unless authorized to do so by the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission. New Jersey statute RS thirty nine colon three dash seventy requires every motor vehicle having a combustion motor to be equipped with a muffler in good working order and in constant operation to prevent excessive or unusual noise and prohibits individuals individuals from using a muffler cutout bypass or similar device in a motor vehicle. The fine for these is like twenty five dollars, right? However, local and municipal noise ordinance, you know, can establish quiet hours, which I know we have, and decibel caps on this motor vehicle noise. The Belmar Municipal Code sixteen dash three dot five states that no person is permitted to operate a motor vehicle at any time in such amount that the sound level emitted by the vehicle exceeds the level set forth in the code. And the decibel limits enumerated in the code vary depending on vehicle type and speed and range from eighty two to ninety six dBA. There was a Senate resolution, number one sixty, sponsored by Senator Greenstein, and it's Assembly Resolution two sixty eight, sponsored by someone when to crush, which they introduced and referred into committee in October two thousand nineteen. These resolutions also urge the urge the NBC to advertise and remind New Jersey motorists that the use of a motor vehicle exhaust system that proceeds, I'm sorry, that produces excessive or unusual sound is illegal. So it's really up to the town or individual towns and local law enforcement to control this issue. We know that, you know, we all know that you, the town implemented the new parking ordinances on May first to try to deter these meetups from happening. Well, right after that, then their meetup happened on May sixth. So the new parking ordinance was clearly not a deterrent to these to these meetups.
All I can tell you is, I could tell you, I don't want to cut you off, but we are work combating the problem. All these, all these statues and everything that you just stated, our police department is doing that. Our problem is, is they are showing up unannounced. And by the time we get all the officers down there, I mean, we have the lieutenant on right now and he could tell you that, I think forty, it was forty something of the parking tickets that were given out, there was numerous noise tickets giving out. We are doing everything in our power to try to combat them from coming here. The problem is, there's no leader to the group. Somebody puts out there on Twitter that they're going to Belmar, and next thing you know, an hour later, they're all signing up coming to Belmar. So by the time we get the police department together and down there and know that they're coming, it is a problem for us. But we are continually looking at different ways to combat them from coming here. There's not one easy solution to it. If we knew that they were coming, then we get out there and block off the roads, we would. But there we get noticed like an hour before they're coming.
Okay.
So it's it's a problem, we are working on it.
Okay, so bear with me. So the, it's not just the noise, but these vehicles have other violations. You know, you have the the no plates on the front of the car, the tinted windows that aren't allowed on the windshield and the driver and passenger doors. I saw someone post on like, bummer like come off Facebook group that said vehicles are legal if they have a valid inspection sticker. We all know that NBC is no longer checking a lot of the things during inspection, plus a vehicle inspection is only a point in time. And initial inspection date between that and the next point in four years, they could do whatever they want to their car. Plus, you know, these individual inspection stations, who knows how they get, you know, they can just slap a sticker on somebody's car and they're, it's done. So so it's not just the noise, it's the other violations that, you know, you know, you got to hit them a bunch of times to make them pay attention.
We have Wall Township, we have Neptune, we have, when they're leaving town, there is so many summonses giving out, you can't even believe it. I think we gave seventy or eighty summonses ourselves, Wall Township hits them going at one ninety five, Neptune hits them going out thirty three. I'm telling you, we are, our police department is out there writing a ton of summonses and.
Okay.
I don't know. We're, we're doing everything in our power to try to combat the whole thing.
Okay, so we know that ninety-nine percent of these drivers come to town are not residents. They don't bring revenue to town. They actually cost the town more money. When you have to deploy off duty officers and bring in neighboring police. Police support. With people sitting outside more and we all know, we want this to stop, right? So, um, here's my proposal. These, because these events are actually being posted on social media as an organized event, it's considered an organized event. If Bellmar enacts a new ordinance that requires any organized event, any organized vehicle event, be specific to vehicles. Of twenty-five vehicles or more, let's throw that out there as a number. Must have an event permit and be secured in advance according to the Bellmar Special Event Application Guidelines, which I have got a hold of today. Because these events are officially organized, because one puts it out on social media, it's considered an organized event. Per the application, they would have like, you know, let's say somebody wants to set up something great. You want to set up something. Town, you get to file an application, at least ninety days in advance. Um, then we'd also have to pay for police presence, et cetera, et cetera, and, um, insurance. And, you know, we have Bellmar cruise nights, they have to get a permit, pay for police presence and whatnot. So, you know, this pop up should follow the same rules. As soon as a BPD, as soon as the police department knows we're always coming to town and they don't have what they said permit, if we have us in place. Um, they should immediately remove them from town, like Howell did a few weeks ago. Um. I think that we need to do some serious advertising on public media, uh, public social media. That, um, you know, Bellmar is not going to stand for this. Um, as soon as you come to town, you're going to get ticketed for whatever violation you have. Um, and a zero tolerance policy like you have in. He says at the south side of Bellmar and Lake Como for noise and stuff like down there. You know, add advertise that we have a zero tolerance for these things in town. Um, and do something like, you know, that ordinance I mentioned. And encourage them to find an industrial park or somewhere else. I mean, I. Car route, car enthusiast, great, you got that, but there's a place for those types of things and here is not it. And I know we kind of are all in agreement with that, but I just want to throw that out there as an option to see if, you know, we could put an ordinance in place to prevent this. And as soon as they come to town, you're out. You know, find a way to kick them right out of town instead of, instead of bringing in off duty police officers that's costing us more money. And then, you know, out of, uh, out of town officers that's pulling them from their streets, which really isn't fair. So.
Okay, we'll tell, we'll take your comments into consideration.
That's it. No other comments?
I, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. We don't like them just as much as you do. Our police department is doing everything possible. Did you ever get stopped by a police officer and get a summons? It takes a few minutes to write it. They can't catch everybody. They're doing the best they can. They're, they're giving seventy, eighty tickets out every time they come here. Wall Township's giving sixty or seventy. Neptune is giving up. We're doing everything that we can to combat it. If we could find the leader of the group, we definitely would be finding him, but there seems to be no leader. Any one of them says, hey, let's go to Bellmore tonight and everybody goes, okay, let's go to Bellmore. There's no one leader to this group. It just, it, they just. Put something out on Twitter and next thing you know, that's where they're going. And as far as how township, they were on private property that they got kicked off.
Okay.
And they're totally different than what happened in Bellmore. So we're working on it.
Yeah, so an ordinance preventing car rallies or something that.
We already have it. We already have it.
We do?
We do. Yes, we do. Everybody needs a special event permit. When they're, and if we could find the organizer of it. We'd be charging them, but there seems to be no organizer of these, these things. They just put out on Twitter, this is one guy says, this is where we're going. They all sign up and follow them.
Okay.
So we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Very much. Stand by. Let's see, looking at the list, we have. Sherry coming to you.
Hello?
Go ahead. Yes.
Sherry Russo, twelve eighteen Briarwood Road in Bellmar. I have a few things here. I hope that you can be patient. First, I wanted to say thank you very much for keeping the restaurant seating. Um, outdoor seating for them. I'm a capitalist personally, or we are in our house capitalists. And I think the restaurant industry was hit very hard. You know, during COVID and I think that is wonderful that you are keeping those seats. Um. A question I have for you that you could possibly take into consideration is. Um, possibly having a last call for raised hands. I know that last time, like a few people, whatever happened. That if maybe John Xavier or you or someone could say like, because if we were in person. You'd see like, there's no more people getting up in line and you could see like. That you could get up in line. And so I thought maybe that's something you could take into consideration. You don't even need to answer me on that right now. It was just something I thought about. Um. A question I have is, um. On handicap parking. And so if you have a handicap placard. Um, do you still pay? For like, there doesn't seem to be enough handicap parking spaces.
We have double than what we need. We have double. That's what, what is required.
And no, my question is, do you pay if like in Asbury, if you have to, or I'm not even sure if it's Asbury. Um. If you have to park with a placard in a space and you have a handicap placard, you don't pay. Here, do you still pay?
And a handicap, no.
And a handicap, no, but in a regular one you do. Okay. And when we put, are putting new, um, spaces in, um. There are enough handicap spaces also like for our new paid parking. Am I correct?
We have double the amount that we need.
Perfect. And, um. One of my questions is, um, in Asbury, when you go to park, like each space. Is kind of marked off, like each space you can fit like one car. And in Bellmar, you have like, um. Like a line at the beginning and then a line at the end, like each space isn't marked off. So for instance, I'm sure everybody knows. That some people take up two spaces. And since we're having new paid parking come. Are we going to put lines in or will people still be able to take up two spaces?
It's, it's, it, you, you, it's a fine if you take up two spaces.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. And, um, someone had told me that they had tried to go on the app. And make a part, book a parking space. I don't know if book is the right word and it was came up as reserved. Um, they, it got reserved on the app. Um, but that was, someone told me that their friend did it. Were they in like a weird space or is that something that comes up or?
You'd have to call, tell your friend to call, uh, our business administrator and he'll take a look at the. What it is, first we're hearing about anybody having a problem with it.
All right. My feeling was, is my guess, they probably parked with like the ambulance parks, that would have come up reserved. In my opinion, of course, I could be wrong. And, um.
Or, or they could have fat fingered it and put in the wrong, the wrong space, right?
Sure.
Are there space numbers there, Ed?
No, it's all, it's all by.
It's all by your plate.
It's all, all by your plate number. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that was somebody else's question. And my other question is, um. On noise ordinances. Um, I know that we have a twenty-four hour a day noise ordinance. Is there something different that happens once it's ten PM?
Yes, we don't need a complaint.
Oh, I see.
Before ten PM, we need a complainant. Somebody needs to call in and say there's too much noise and then we send the police officers down there to check. After ten o'clock, you could just call in and say there's noise at this location. We don't need a complaint.
All right, perfect. I thought I knew something changed at ten. And, um, my one other question is, um. I know the Federal Communications Act, which was about twenty-four years ago, but don't quote me on the fact that it was exactly twenty-four. Um, and did we know, I know that someone tonight had said that the lar is on Verizon's side. Um, did we know that ahead of time?
Sure we do.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we knew or, I mean, I'm all for standing on principle. Um, okay, um, that's all. Thank you for everything. And I hope that you take into consideration the last call for the raising hands. Thank you.
Thank you. And. Stand by. Malango, stand by. Go ahead.
Uh, it's Kathleen and Malango, nine hundred Ocean Avenue. Um, just one quick question. Is there for the, um, cars that come and, uh, you know, make all those wonderful noises? Like they did May sixth. Can't we put something on the road to like Umpers or something to slow them down? I mean, it would slow the people driving so fast on that road to begin with and. They're low, uh, cars, so they can't really drive very quick. On Ocean Avenue with that type of vehicle.
Well, you, you gotta understand that Ocean Avenue is a county road and, uh, they have to follow their, the, the uniform traffic code, so. We, we could ask them to come down and do a study, uh, about putting some, uh. But normally the county will not put that on any of the roads, but we could ask them. Does that answer your question or?
I, um, my kitchenette went out, so I can hear you.
Oh, 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 yeah, that's, yeah, Ocean Avenue is a county road. And, uh, so it has to be done by, by Monmouth County and they, they consider the uniform traffic code. They'll do a study on it, but it's very rare that they, they will put up speed bumps on any of their roads.
Okay. Okay, that was, uh, just a question that I thought that was popular reason. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
County road, right?
Yeah.
And coming to Mr. Cyrus, stand by.
Good evening.
Hi, Cy.
How are you?
Good. Name and address, please. Name and address.
Sure, Cy Wright Meyer, Fifth Avenue, Bellmore.
Go ahead.
Two quick ones that are really feedback from what some of the other people said regarding the pop-ups. Um, you know, I've tried to go to the seven eleven on, uh, quite a few occasions during the pop-ups. And I noticed that, and I understand that this is actually an ordinance in town that. When you park in one of the diagonal spots, you have to go nose into the spot.
Yes.
And I noticed that the vast majority of the cars. Um, that are parked on Ocean Avenue have nose to the middle of the road. So that doesn't really involve a whole lot, but a person walking from one car to the other and giving them a parking ticket. Um, I mean, literally, I would say, when I say the vast majority, I would say ninety percent. Of the cars, because they want to show off their engines, they want to show off their cars, so they post, they park nose out. When I was down there the last time, I didn't see a single ticket on any one of the cars that were parked nose to the middle of the road. Just food for thought. Think about that. And to Councilman Carveli, um, you're on the planning board, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, to go back to Linda's comment about the parking at the, uh, beach house. I, I, I was a little confused and I apologize for that. But at the planning board meeting, was it approved or is it subject to approval?
No, it's approved.
All right, well, wouldn't there, you know, and I have to imagine that you get the request in advance. And if there were an issue, at that point, wouldn't the parking study have been conducted rather than S ex post facto?
They're not responsible. No, I mean, they're not responsible for a parking study.
No, I would think. I would think the town would be responsible for that. I would think that if somebody proposes something for the town, which involves parking. That before the planning board would be able to rule on whether or not it's acceptable or unacceptable. Would involve at that point in time. You know, having some type of parking survey rather than, once it's been approved. To then say, oh, we're going to look into it now. What good is that going to be?
Nah, so the, I mean, this is really not the forum for this. Um, the planning board would have been the right place to pose that question, but to answer your question.
You're not answering the question though. The question is, wouldn't you have studied it prior?
Mr. Wright Meyer, he's trying to answer your question, but you interrupted him. So give him an opportunity, bond. And then if you have a follow-up quest, question, feel free, but Mr. Councilman Carabeli was trying to answer your question and then you interrupted him. Please provide him with an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. To answer your question in short, is that. As I understand it. Uh, the. Applicant was only required to satisfy five spaces and he was able to do that. End of story. The, that's the way the zoning reads.
Councilman Carveli, uh, just, just to add to that. You listen to our planner and engineer when they're before the planning board, so. They look at, they look at all that and they make the recommendations to the planning board, correct?
Correct. And there's a letter issued, uh, saying that they meet all, uh, zoning, all requirements for. Whatever they have to, to meet for that application. The. Parking study is something the town would take on because it's a municipal parking lot and we're taking it on because we have concerns about parking and traffic.
And so again, I asked the question. Why wouldn't that survey have been conducted prior to approving that particular?
Cy, why don't you come to the next planning board meeting and ask?
I would love to.
We'll have all the right people there.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, um, Councilman McCracken. Um, I give you accolades in terms of wanting to plant new trees in town. Um, and despite, I guess, some of the, you know, um, uh, problems with, you know, the. Delivery of, uh, seedlings or whatever the case may be. My question is, and I go back a couple of months when you first had proposed this, uh. You know, this, you're looking at the town from a, you know, a tree perspective. Um, what about the maintenance of the existing trees? Um, you know, if you go up and down some of these streets, especially those that are closer to the ocean. Where, I mean, I can look out my window and see at least three that are dead capped. Understanding agriculture and horticulture, having been in the golf business my entire life. Um, I can see that the top of these trees have, are dead. And the, the rest of the tree is ultimately going to die as well, if not corrected. Um, is there a plan moving forward? It was my understanding. That the horticulturist that the town hired was going to conduct a survey. Of the trees in town and I have yet to seen his assessment. Is that still ongoing?
The trees on private, the maintenance of trees on private property are the responsibility of the homeowner. The maintenance of trees on public property, if it's borough property. Are the responsibility of the borough. A tree inventory survey was done. It was given to the Shade Tree Commission. The Shade Tree Commission had, uh, several questions and clarifications about that study. And then got busy with the Arbor Day celebrations. So the Shade Tree Commission meeting is tomorrow night. And the Shade Tree Commission, um, is, has copied that report. And is working with the, uh, council on next steps. There's a bunch of different ideas that have been floated around about how to move forward. Um, but the Shade Tree Commission has not formalized their recommendation yet.
Okay, so, so I understand this. Um, because I think that everyone in Bellmore ought to be concerned about this. The town plants the tree. We, the, as the property owner, give the town the easement. In which to plant that tree. Yet the town then says, but it's your responsibility to maintain the tree?
That is not correct.
Okay.
Um, when there is a site plan application. Um. That site plan and application must conform with the borough's zoning ordinances. And in order to get site plan approval, that is granted obviously by the code officials. You know, based on the project of the construction. Project. If someone would like to have a tree planted on their property. I believe the borough used to have a program. Where they would voluntarily plant a tree if someone. where they would voluntarily plant a tree if someone requested it. That, that, as far as I know, has been discontinued and is not currently underway. So anybody who has a piece of property who plants a tree on their piece of property is responsible for the maintenance of that tree.
All right, so, I, I don't think, Councilman, with all due respect, you're answering my question. The tree that I'm talking about is a hundred and twenty years old. And that has been verified by Rutgers Agronomy Department. So it's been there for a hundred and twenty years. It's a sycamore. And there's multiple sycamores in my neighborhood that, you know, have, have been subject to wind, salt, et cetera, damage. That is in the easement that, you know, a homeowner has to give to the town. Those are the trees that have been capped by adverse weather. So that's my question. Does the town go around and assess not only the physical condition of the tree which they planted, and do they also assess the damages that those trees do to sidewalks?
So you're talking about, you're talking about trees between the sidewalk and the curb?
Yeah, the easement area.
Yeah, those are, those are the ones, right, Jim? They're, they're, they're the boughs trees.
So yes, there, there is an easement, and Patrick can probably address this better than I can. And I think it has to do with my question earlier in the evening about these public right-of-ways. But those trees, if the tree is on public property, the borough is responsible for maintaining it. If the tree is on private property, the homeowner is responsible maintaining, for maintaining it, even if it's in, in the easement. Just because it's in a quote-unquote easement does not mean that that is public property, still private property. It's just that if the town ever needed to use for a public purpose that, that easement, they have the right to do to, to do that.
All right, so. Councilman Varga. Or not Councilman, but Council Varga. So am I correct then in assuming that the homeowners in town are required to give an easement from sidewalk to face, for, to face a curb? And the town has the ability to go in for whether it be utility purposes and/or for the planting of trees. Once that tree is planted, it then becomes the responsibility of the homeowner. Is that an accurate statement?
Can I, timeout here for one second, timeout. Si, this sounds a lot like the conversation you were having with Mr. Dasty a few months back. And Mr. Dasty offered to speak with you on this matter.
And he did not, he did not, he did not offer to speak to me. Instead, what he said was that the town owns the land, which they do not. It's an easement. So he was incorrect in his reply to me. I have my notes right in front of me here. He never offered to have a debate on this subject.
Si, I can.
He offered to review your survey.
The trees there years ago, but what I can say. Is that the Shade Tree Commission is not planting trees on people's private property without the homeowner's consent.
That's not my question. My question is the easement part of the property which I've given you.
Mr. Redmeyer.
Every homeowner has given you that easement.
A chance to answer you. This is what I want you to do, because there are other members from the public who do also want to address this, this council. I want you to call my office tomorrow. I will be here, and you and I can have a conversation, because at the end of the day, my answer to you is going to say, I need to review the borough ordinances before I can give you a definitive yes or no, maybe depends answer. That is the only way. So I get you want your answer right now, but quite frankly, I can't give it to you, and debating back and forth is serving nobody. So, okay, if you have another topic to address, move, let's move on to that, and call me tomorrow.
One more. Regarding the Mediterranean project, was there any allotment of low-income housing? Because I thought that that was something that was a state requirement.
Si, if it's not in there, they have to pay the borough a sum of money. There's an ordinance in that, in there. If they don't put it in, I think it's like one and a half percent of what the, the assessed value is that they have to pay to the borough into that fund. But we, we didn't even get that for you.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you very much. I didn't mean to be, I'm not meaning to be disruptive here. I'm just trying to get some information, that's all. Have a great summer, everyone.
Thanks, Si, you too. Thank you as well. And Mr. Tom. Come to you. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, guys. Mark, I, I sense your frustration on the subject of the car top, you know, pop-up rallies, whatever they're called. I, I definitely feel the police are doing everything they can do within the limits of what they're allowed to do. I mean, you know, it's not that that's not something, that is definitely something we should be doing, and we're doing a lot of it, but it's not correcting the problem, and I know you're aware of that.
Yeah.
And what I'm saying.
The chief, we work with the chief of police all the time, Business Minister, Chief of Police, the state police, all the surrounding towns, trying to figure out how we're gonna combat it. We're not unique to this. They pick other towns to go to around New Jersey, and they're creating the havoc around their towns too. So our police department's in touch with those other towns, trying to figure out how we're gonna combat this, so.
And, and that's definitely where I think we ought to be. You know, this, we're doing this piece, it's not working totally, so we need to move to something else. And we need ideas. That, that lady Sharon Mahoney, God bless her, you know, she was mentioning ideas and further educating us on the subject. I think that's important. Ed, I don't know, I'm not sure about old Ed over there. He's usually shaking his head no. And he probably has a reason for doing that.
He does not have a poker face.
Hey, Tom.
And I might be doing the same thing if I was sitting where you are.
We, we deal with this, the police department gets as much intelligence as they can. You know, there's this thing called the Constitution of the United States, that people are allowed to congregate. We do not pick on any groups, specific groups. It, it's not the right thing to do. It's unannounced, it's not organized, it's through social media. As soon as the police department finds out about it, they get an extra manpower in, they call the surrounding towns. They, they get the state police, the sheriff's department, they notify everybody, and they have a plan in place. And they have an enforcement team that comes down. They set out the speed signs, and the speed signs to our, our advantage is that Chief Scott told me that there is only a few cars that did over thirty-one miles an hour down Eighth Avenue the last time. So they're trying to combat it through the speed control and through enforcement. They're trying to do everything they can legally, what they can, but they can't close down everything just because a group, whether it be a group of cars, a group of motorcycles, a group of horses, they can't do it. All they can do is take, take care of the quality of life issues. They're out there in force, they're writing equipment violations, speeding. They're overwhelmed with how many cars are down there, and they still have to maintain the peace. They do an excellent job, and that's all we can do right now.
Ed, it, it always sounds like, you, you, you always sound like, well, they're just kids. You know, they gotta, they gotta be wild, you know?
No, I don't say they're just kids.
And I know you're not, I know you're not saying that, but that's the message I get. And, 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 and I guess what I want to hear any other people with the car, pop-up rallies is, is what else can we do? What else can we do? We don't want to take away their civil rights. You know, we want to be within the law, however they have a responsibility to be peaceful citizens, like we all do. And they're not being peaceful. They're, they're not. So, so I, I look for your help.
Each person then, that's not following the law, the quality of life issues are not, not following the motor vehicle code, they are summoned or arrested. So you, you can't, you can't just paint everybody with a broad brush. You have to take care of the violators one at a time, and that's what, that's what our police department and the surrounding towns are doing.
Well, keep at it, guys. It's, it's very tough. Oh, by the way, Eighth and E had a, one of those signs in the middle of the street was, helped, it helped. Are we on the list to get another one out there? Eighth and E.
The speed sign?
Stop sign, yep. No, the stop sign. Right at the intersection, middle of the intersection.
Tom, we'll get that out there, because, yeah, they're putting them out now, so we'll, we'll get it out there.
Okay, because Eighth Ave is a major throughway, you know, through the town. So I, I really appreciate that.
Thanks, Tom.
And, and, you know, if you ever want to come over, have a couple glasses of wine, or, oh, no, not while you're on duty. But please, please do.
We'll be right over.
After the meeting, come on over. All right, guys. Thanks a lot. Bye now.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Don't tempt us. Stand by. Stand by. Mr. Volka, if you put your hand up again, if that was a mistake, but feel free to put up if you have to, again. Mr. Kramer.
Yes, but Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Mr. Kramer.
Okay, I just want to ask a favor regarding this Verizon application. Is it possible to post their application on the borough's website? The same that is done with the zoning board and the planning board. So right now, the only thing that I have to review is the complaint itself and not the application and any other submitted materials.
I, I could tell you this, and we had, our engineer had sent the application back because it wasn't complete. So I don't know if we got it, April, that we get it back.
Well, the original proposal that they presented to the council a couple months ago is on the website under whatever meeting date that was. I'd have to go back and check. That proposal is on there, and that shows pictures of what they were looking to do.
Yeah, that was August of last year, but I believe back then, I, I think they had three different proposals. One on the west side of Ocean Avenue, one on the east side of Ocean Avenue. And I think, I think the third option was actually on the boardwalk itself.
Right. The application that came into the planning board went to our engineer, and he sent it back to them because it was an incomplete application. So I'm not sure if they resubmitted it or not. Mayor, can you bring your mic, please? It's a little glitchy. By the end. All right, there you go. Thanks, sir. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they just.
Go ahead, April, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I mean, the planning board application is still pending. That hasn't been scheduled for a meeting yet. That's usually when it gets posted. I guess if you guys want everything posted, we could, I'll have to contact Verizon to get PDFs of everything, because it's too large for us to do.
Well, first of all, we have to contact Avak, Peter Avakian's office, because I knew the engineer had it, and it was incomplete, so I'm not sure if we even have it back yet. Mr. Kramer, we'll have to get back to you on that, and, and find out exactly where that application is. But if you contact April, we'll, we'll, we'll call the engineer's office. But I, I believe that the last I knew, the application was incomplete, and they had sent it back to, to, and told where his deficiencies were.
Yeah, I mean, I do have hard copies. If he wanted to come in and view them, I just don't have an electronic copy to post online.
Okay, Mr. Kramer.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to say, I appreciate the discussion about the cannabis and the regulation of cannabis in Belmar. And I'm not familiar with liquor license laws. But I do know that you can't smoke anything indoors in a public place. I'm just curious now, with all this open air dining area, like was, like a beach house is going to have on the roof of their building, will people be able to smoke cannabis upon the rooftop?
I, you know, I've been in contact with a lot of the restaurants, and even talking about that, that whole scenario that you just mentioned. And I think most of them are gonna ban smoking altogether in all the restaurants, even, even in their smoking areas. So, I mean, that was the consensus I was starting to get, that they're just gonna ban it in their restaurants altogether, so, any kind of smoking. Because they, they'll be, they know it'll be an issue. They don't want somebody in there smoking cannabis when they're not, they should be having a glass of wine or something. And, you know, they're coming in their establishment to do that. So they're aware of the issues, you know, so we've been in contact with them. But I think what most of them said they're just gonna do is just ban smoking altogether, and not even have a smoking area.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm, actually, I'm more interested. Has the state of New Jersey addressed that? In, in other words, many of these establishments have liquor licenses. Are there any, you know, is there anything at the state level that prohibits cannabis smoking on a, like, a liquor license premises?
I think, of, my understanding of the state law, and Patrick, if I'm wrong, maybe you can jump in. But I, I believe that there's, they're leaving it up to the local towns. And as far as the liquor license establishment, wherever they designate a smoking area, if it's on their property, unless they ban the smoking, I guess, probably because it's legal now. But they, if they have a smoking area, they will be able to smoke it wherever their smoking area is. Patrick, do you know of any state, what the state did to ban any of that?
No, my understanding is actually as yours, Mr. Mayor. If, say, for example, a bar has an outside smoking area, they could designate that as permitting marijuana use. Marijuana, excuse me, marijuana smoking, inhalation, et cetera, at that designated area. But if the township opts to adopt an ordinance to prohibit the sale cultivation or distribution, that would be a whole separate side of the analysis. That isn't necessarily the same as prohibiting a bar from smoking or permitting within its premises, because it's, it's private property as opposed to public. I believe that answers the question.
Okay, I, I guess I'll try to figure it out. I, I'm just curious, like I said, the last night, at the planning board meeting, they approved a open-air rooftop dining area. And I, I was just curious as to whether, whether there was any direct connection or, or additional regulation of cannabis as a result of the liquor license.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted. We know anything other than that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Last call. No hands? No hands.
Wait, can I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn?
Good thing my headphones are running out of batteries.
A second? All in favor?
Bye. Thank you, everyone.